First, may I mention that this meeting is being taken by Area 58. We would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join me. Please, gentlemen, remove your hats. My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion from the board?
So moved.
With a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. We have our first meeting not until 6:15, so Mr. Nezarella, do you want to do the minutes and the warrants?
Sure. I move to approve the following selectmen minutes. Regular session July 6, 2022. Regular session October 25, 2022. Regular session January 17, 2023.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll number 63 for $392,286.90. Vendor warrant number 64 for $1,720,327.41. Vendor warrant number 65 for $55,058.71. Withholding warrants number 66 for $135,586.39. Ambulance commitments for $43,122.05. Ambulance commitments for $54,769.95.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve of the following warrant. Vendor warrant number 66 for $111,003.57.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I was neglectful. I apologize. Tonight is the first night for the newly appointed town administrator, Mr. Cody Haddad. We're welcoming him to Halifax. Expect to have him working for us for a long time. He's already doing a good job because he works extra hours. And it's the last night that our interim town administrator, Mrs. Nolan, has gone on to be back to being an accountant. We want to thank you for all the work you did. Tremendous amount of work. Really kept the ship floating until we got a little bit more stabilized. So thank you for that. We appreciate it very much. Okay, discussions. We have ambulance abatements.
Do you want to do the selectmen bills first?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's all right. It's all right. See, that's why I should...
That's why we're blessed.
I move to approve the payment of the following selectmen bills. Selectment expense account, WB Mason Company, for the amount of $169.84. Legal and revolving expense, Express Newspaper, for $45. And law, Brooks &amp; Durendis, for the amount of $17,397.39.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You want to do the ambulance abatements while we're on the money side?
Ambulance abatements, November 2022, for $73,932.21. Ambulance abatement, December 2022, for $101,718.63.
Okay. Do you want me to...
Well, you want to move it?
Move to...
Okay. Yeah, there you go. Yep. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. We have a memo from Chief Chaves about risk assessment for the COA. I don't think I saw that. And Mrs. Reagan is here. Are you here for this?
Yeah.
All right. Risk assessment from the police chief from December of 2022. On December 19, 2022, I spoke with Arlene Reagan, Director of the Halifax Council on Aging. Director Reagan had several safety concerns she wished to speak about. The safety concerns were for the public in the building and her staff. She's reported that individuals have entered the building causing a disturbance and had had the police come at least once. The police chief has made some specific recommendations involving panic buttons, public access, and panic alarms. It seems to me that we should refer this to the building committee and have them work on getting these issues addressed. Mrs. Reagan, do you have anything you want to talk about? Anything in particular?
I just want to mention that we, they did, you know, in fact, provide us with the two panic buttons that we could carry with us. So, because we're not always at our desks. So it worked out. It's working out pretty well. So also to, you know, initiated policies in terms of, like, if there was an issue and how to address the issue. So it's just been in the last couple of months that this has come up. And we've had some other concerns before, but it was becoming a little bit more significant. But I think at this point, we're, you know, addressed it. And everybody's taken a proactive approach to this, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Is Chief Chaves on the...
I think so.
Can I just receive this? Yes.
Are you there, chief?
Does he need to be on the unit? Caesar, can we unmute the chief?
He should be able to.
Okay. Chief, if you can hear us, can you unmute?
Yeah, this is the chief. Okay. Well, so the chief's already given us recommendations. I'll move that we send this to the building committee, ask them to implement this, the chief's suggestions.
That's a second for that one, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I didn't have one more thing to say. Of course, the building itself is not committed to, you know, having, you know, the issues of the safety. It's just the way the building is to, you know, it's not...
I accidentally went back to the original setting after I thought I allowed him to unmute himself. You should not be fazed.
So I just wanted to mention that the building itself is just...
Right, right. Okay. But we should get that, at least that much done. Yeah. Okay. All right. We have a talent bank request from Linda Redding. It should be in the folders.
I have a copy here. Linda was previously on the cultural council. She took a hiatus, and now she's interested in joining again.
Yep. And so any questions? I mean, Miss Redding Ross is a great asset to any committee she gets on, so I would be well in favor of this.
If I could share. I know Pam, you're on this council. Have you had a chance to speak with this woman?
Yeah, she was on it. You can only serve two consecutive terms in a row, just three years and three years. She had to come off three years. But yeah, she was an asset. She really...
Okay. Awesome. Okay. I'll move that we appoint Linda Redding to the cultural council. I don't know what the term is.
It would be today's date and three years from now.
Three years from now.
Yeah, so, yes.
Okay. So for three years from now.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We have a resignation letter from Bob Lewis. I don't think I have that in my folder.
Yes, I have it. I have a copy of it here. So Mr. Ross had previously stepped down from the building committee and would also like to step down from the bylaw review committee due to work commitments.
So we have a letter from Mr. Ross to resign from his position on the zoning bylaw review committee? Any discussion about that? Or somebody want to make a motion to accept it?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept that. And Pam, you know what I'm going to ask? Send a letter to Mr. Ross thanking him for his time.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. By the way, do we know how many vacancies are on that committee now?
I do not. No, it's talking about...
There's four vacancies.
Four vacancies out of...
We need somebody from the planning board because Gordon Andrews was on there, but now he's not on a planning board, so we need somebody from that. I think you stepped up for the selectmen seat, correct? And then we have two at-large, and...
I thought there was only one at-large that was open. Two open?
And George Mahling is resigning as well.
He was from the finance.
Because of the bylaw, so then, okay.
So you need another finance member.
Susan Mahling, planning board.
And there's two citizens at-large.
But we have, I thought Ellen Powell was one of the citizens.
So maybe it's three then. I'm miscounting that.
Yeah, so I think it's three. One planning, the finance, because I didn't know much on. And then one citizen at-large.
He's agreed to stay until we have somebody who hasn't been able to make it. We actually haven't been able to get quorum since, what did we just say, September 26, when we tried to have a meeting on three?
Okay. So there's three vacancies? All right. And at least one of them has to be a planning board member?
Yeah.
One of finance.
One of FinCon.
One from finance and one from planning? Okay.
And then one...
One at-large.
Okay. Can we ask the planning board and the finance committee to designate someone so that this committee can keep on moving? And then we'll advertise for an at-large person?
Well, I do have a couple of talent bank ones that people have filled out, so I don't know if I want to look through that. I can get those out there, but then you guys can look at them and...
Yeah. We don't have to do it tonight, but yeah. Okay, yeah. No, absolutely, yeah. Let's take the talent bank formally. There's no sense in letting a committee flounder. So it needs to be addressed. And planning board should be able to designate someone. That's not you? Are you different?
There's two from planning.
Ah, okay. All right. So we need the planning board and the finance committee to designate somebody?
We had our meeting last night. Can we talk about it tomorrow night or not?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, yeah. So we'll get it for the following year for next Monday. Okay. Next Monday.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Halifax Action Plan for MBTA Communities. Can we do that in three minutes?
We might want to leave a little more time for this discussion.
We'll skip that for a minute. Landfill monitoring contract?
Yes, that we can. So as part of the landfill, we have a monitoring contract with tie-in bond. That is a three-year contract that is up at the end of this fiscal year. So this is a renewal of that contract. It's three-year term for a total of $58,600. So we requested the board approve this. This was procured through an exemption under 30B and referred by our, Bob Valerie, our health inspector.
Any questions from the board?
There's two copies here.
So the signature has to be...
Yeah, yeah. Not that age.
All three of us. Okay. So we need a motion to approve the landfill monitoring contract with...
Tie-in bond.
Say again?
Tie-in bond.
Oh, tie-in bond. So this is for the Hemlock Lane landfill?
Yes.
Okay. Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Today's the 25th?
No, 24.
Okay. We just read about the 6:15. Jerry Joy, RFP for solar fields. How are you?
Good, yourself?
Fine, thank you.
It's in your electronic copy, too, but it's my print.
A little old-fashioned. At least some of it.
No, I like to see. I like to hold it and see it. Thank you. Last year about this time, you brought us up to the previous quarter selection. Since it's brand new board, we figured you'd better come back and let you know what's happening. But presented an RFP for the landfill, and then we got approval to go ahead with it. Since then, we've updated the RFP. We've had town council look at it, and they've said everything looks okay. What we had done at that time, there was two ways of doing it. Ed gone and give me Power Options Incorporated. They're nonprofit. You could join their nonprofit, and they'll come out, they'll look at the site, they'll do the design, they'll eye the contract. You have no say in it. Whatever they come up with a figure, that's what you get. Or what I explained to them is to try and, to me, I'm a businessman, real background, electrical contractor. I was for 35 years. So as far as I'm concerned, owning it is the best way. I mean, the town, the town owned it. Your electric bill, you paid 100% every month, every year, for 20 years and 30 years, and all goes. But you have to finance it. So you're looking at probably $3 million to build out there. That was two years ago. So now we've had all kinds of inflation, so it could be a lot more money. But the other way we can do it, we can put it out to bid. We could have, again, we're going to lease the land. We have a backup because we have to have backup power. You have to have battery backup out there, and so there's a little bit more money to come into it. And then at the eighth year, because two years ago, normally eight years is a payback for whoever builds one. So we figured at the eighth year point, we could go into negotiations and buy it, and then we would own it. I know everyone thinks, oh, now we have to own a landfill. We could maintain it? Well, if you're going to be in a business, a solar field is probably the best business to be in. There's very little maintenance up there. Yes, you're going to have maybe a broken panel or something failed or an invertor or spine. They don't move. They just sit there, and they produce power. So it's the nicest thing to do as far as if you're going to get into it. But that was, that's an option. So when I put, when you read this RFP, I put that in there, that the eighth year, we can negotiate buying it out. And we can probably do it in the seventh year if we see how things are going. But I wanted it in the RFP so there's an option for us. So that's what we put in there. We put into it. And going back to the landfill on the power option, Ed gave us what Pembroke did. Pembroke has a 3-megawatt system on their landfill. And they get over 20 years, they get a $5,780,000 payment. That's over 20 years. So if you break it down, we're looking for a 1-megawatt. So we're a third of their size. So a third of it, they get $1,734,000 a year. We would probably want to get $87,000. If you went with doing nothing unless someone else knew the whole thing. And then when I did, I took just, again, just wrote back the envelope figures or whatever I get online for as far as what other places are paying for it. At the end of eight years, and I based it on a price of $3 million, they're paid back. We take a loan out, but at that time, now we own it. So we're getting over $300,000 a year just on our electric bill, because that's what our bill is, roughly about $300,000 a year. We do a million megawatt hours of usage. That's half, that's only 500,000 of the landfill. It's half of what we're going to do. The other half is additional income that will come into us. So when you break it all down, from the eighth year on, it would take us another eight years to get our money to pay off the loan. So that's 16 years. So I'm looking at, you can have this landfill for 20, 25, 30 years. That's what they're going for right now. So you've got another 14 years of getting probably about $400,000 a year. So there's benefits in both ways. But the only way you can have real numbers is to put it out and get real numbers to come in. Then you can sit down and we can go over the whole thing and say, okay, is this appropriate? If none of them work out, we can say forget it, and we can hire someone else to just put it in and get the lesser amount. But there's still something that'll come into the town. We know our electric bill's going to go up. It's not going to go down. We already know that. We all learned that quick. So that's where we are in the moment. The dates that I put in this year, I'm looking at trying to get something out by the end of March. They probably run about four weeks, so we won't get bids, final bids in until about the end of April. And then we can sit down and go over what's going on.
So I'm new to this issue entirely, and so I have just a, I need an understanding. When you talk about the landfill, which landfill are we talking about?
The Hemlock Street, right?
Hemlock. Hemlock Street.
Now, that is a unique landfill, let me tell you. We have a building, we have an highway department that sits right on it. They have a road that runs right halfway through it to get to the other end of the building. We have a cemetery, a working cemetery that's right beside it. So there's a lot of different cost factors that go into it. That's why some of these numbers may be a little bit more raised up as far as that goes. But I didn't, I've already met with Steve, and we walked the whole site. We found places that we could put construction trailers. Found a nice spot for a lay-down area. So we're trying to mitigate some of the costs that are going to say, well, wait, this is a small site, what are we going to do? But we've got places they can do the lay-down for a crew that came in, have the office trailers there, so there is room for them. And you'd also have to sit, get down with Steve and say, okay, what are your hours? How can we work this year so that we're not interfering with you when the highway department chair will come? As far as the cemetery, it's the same thing. If we know that something's going to be in that day, then nothing's going to be worth in that area. Somewhere else where they hold it for the hour or whatever is going to be. So there's a little, a couple of things we have to go on with.
That's just in the construction phase, though.
Exactly. Exactly.
And then who oversees this whole project, like, from the towns?
From the town. That, I have to stem code. I mean, my background is electrical. I mean, I have no problem in helping out and doing that. But I don't know what the procedures are as far as the town is concerned. If there's any other rulings that have to come up, there has to be someone who has an engineering license. I don't. I have master license, but I don't have any engineering. But I built a couple of these, they're small ones. They're only, we did one for Harvard University and one for City of Cambridge. But I mean, my forte is really in heavy construction. I mean, we did hospitals, power plants, all that stuff for 35 years. So that's my end. But I do know a little bit about solar. It's not that difficult. All of these solar fields, now the contractors, they know pretty well, cut it down to a science. You know, there's no... 10 years ago, it was a little bit different. No one knew what was going on. But now they know pricing, they know everything that's going on. So it's not, it's not a problem for anyone to build. It's going to be easy to go through.
Once it's in operation, is it owned by...
For the first eight years, they do everything. They do the operation of it, the maintenance. That's why, but then at eight years, all of us can see how it's going. If we don't want to do it in the eighth year and buy it out, we can just say, keep going. We're knowing. But I think you need, we need that time so that you can understand what the maintenance is, what problems they have. But I mean, if you, I don't know of any solar field around that you hear real problems with. No one's saying, hey, we should have done this. I mean, it's, there's no moving parts. That's the big thing. They just sit there. There's, you know, maintenance, once a month someone drives through just to make sure. Everything is under controls. So there'll be a computer, we can have the computer in the highway department, doesn't matter where we put it. And if anything was wrong, there's an alarm comes right up. So it's not like you're letting it sit there and no one knows about it.
It's all fenced in, too.
Yeah.
What is the time, what do you want us to do right now?
I just want you to look it over and just say, okay, what I'm telling you and what I'm saying here, we'll go through with the other quarter selection set. Yeah, go ahead and get it going.
So you're talking about from Hemlock Lane, like, that section, the way the landfill actually used to be, and then in the back, behind the building also?
Yes.
So it's like a T?
It's right at the front. It comes down, and then it's kind of split because it's a road with us through it. And then there's the other half on the other side that goes out.
In the back, back corner?
I landed out with Steve, how much he needs for the working area so that it's not cut down so he can't work up there. So we've got the right layout.
Yeah, you'll have a road going through it.
And that'll be all set up, yeah. What we'll have to do, and again, I'll off my services part, I've done this before, there will be a walkthrough, a pre meeting for everyone that's been. I have no problem running that or being a part of it. And we'll lay out up at the field with a couple of cones, the full layout of the landfill itself, but everyone takes a drone and they run it by. You all know, it's totally different now. It's a little bit easier, really. But I have no problem in handling that there, and I can wear Tony on it or anyone else that wants to be on it. I mean, there's a couple of members of the full solar committee, which I want to, that will help out as far as being in there and taking notes with what happens.
Has this been looked at by town council at all?
Yes, it has.
One thing to know, any lease of town property over five years requires a town meeting vote. So that's something you may want to consider bringing it to town meeting first to get their approval to lease the land up to, you could say, 30 years. And that way there, once you bid it out, you can move forward if you find a contract that you like. Because as it stands now, if we receive bids back, we can't award anything because town meeting hasn't voted to allow the lease of land to over five years.
Do we get an agreement? Is it allowed to do that at town meeting, just like an in general authority?
You could do an article that would say, to lease the plot of land, whatever, and list the plot of land for the purposes of solar up to 30 years to be determined by the select board. And you leave it as an up-to amount, and that way there, it's the board's discretion as to what the actual term would be.
We should do that, then. We should make sure that it's on the warrant.
I can actually bring some of the dates that winds up more with the town meeting so we can, they can move the dates anywhere around. I just...
What he's talking about is just getting authority kind of parallel to even deciding to do this, just getting the authority to lease the property.
And that's any over five acres?
Five years. Five, any lease of town property.
Any, any.
So he's at that, we could do that even if we didn't do this yet. We just try to get the authority so we can do it. And he's saying that once, once this goes out and say we get an award, say in July, we'll already have the authority to do the lease. That's what he's talking about. So it's, it's a good point. It's two parallel things. Okay.
I mean, I'll get together with you, Cody.
Yeah, definitely. We can schedule a meeting and review here.
Start everything with that we have to do ahead of time to make sure this happens.
So what you want us to do is review this and then bring it back up for a vote, whether or not to go ahead with it?
Sure, whatever.
Okay. Can we put it on an agenda then? Pam, and, yeah, you have a question?
Frank Johnston, Elm Street. I have a couple of questions in the life of the solar field in 20 years, 30 years. Who's responsible to decommission that and dispose of all the universal...
That's our business here, too. The installer is supposed to be responsible. There'll be a bond that'll be placed, they'll have their extra amount of dollars to cover that disassembling, the whole system.
Is it a cash bond? 30 years is a long time to...
Well, it's a security bond, so yeah, it is a cash bond.
It is a cash. Because you've got to have the environmental impacts of the solar panels, the battery backup system, all that has to be managed as a minimum with universal.
Right. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, what's happening now, especially in the solar panels, they're getting better and better. There's very little hazardous materials that's in them. It's changed. Now it's, you've got the aluminum frame that goes on it, you've got silicone, and you've got plastic. That's really what you base it down to. And what happens right now is the government is trying, there's no place that can do recycling on solar panels.
Correct.
There is not. So what they're doing is they're going to try and come up and charge, whoever's buying a solar panel, it's going to be a fee involved, and that's going to be put into a fund. But right now, all they're doing is they're just stacking them in a landfill. They're taking, they might take the aluminum off, but everything else just gets stacked, and that's it. Because there is no recycling. But they're, they are getting a lot better than the panels that are coming out. Yes, there is a bond that has...
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we can put this on an agenda for...
You have on February 7, February 20.
I think the 28th is where we will... Najah.
Yeah.
Give us a month, three days.
Sure, that's good.
If we have any questions.
I want everyone to understand exactly what we're trying to do and say, let's do it or not do it.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay. 6:30, we have a hearing on transfer alcohol license. Who's here for that?
I think they might be in the hall. I think George is in the hall behind the door.
Anybody in the hallway there for the alcohol license?
Let's go, folks. Come on in. Put it in the hot seat, right there.
Go ahead. Say it now. Go ahead. Get it over with.
This is the guy.
So we are going to, I'll just read the notice. Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, 6:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. For the purpose of hearing the application for the transfer of an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license from In-Season Restaurant, Inc., DBA Lakeside Villa, George Latini, manager to Mon Ponset Events LLC, John Sapphire and Amy Sapphire owners, and Ronald E. Porzio, manager on property located at 550 Mon Ponset Street, Halifax, Massachusetts. So the hearing's open. And, let's see here. So just to go through our checklist here, we've gotten the application. We need the licensing authority certification, I guess when we're done the hearing, we'll do that. Retail application received, paid the fee. We've received articles of the corporate organization, vote of any corporate bar, boards, rather, newspaper ad, January 6th. Purchase and sale, lease and financial documents are all in order. No outstanding taxes. Tips training will have to be part of the permit. No site plan, and all other notifications have been made. Floor Jones, you want to tell us what you want to do?
Well, basically, we're selling the property, semi-retiring. Been there for 16 and a half years, and the new owner is Jonathan, they have three other places. They do a lot of functions and stuff. And they're great people, they've been in the building for probably about two months now. We've been working with them. Jesus, they're almost a year back.
They're over here.
So they're over here, so. There's somebody behind me, the whole gang of them are there. But that's the game plan right now. I'll stay on part-time and fill in wherever they need and run it as-is. All the employees are staying on, so everything is status. We just keep going the way we're going, so.
Okay.
Everything will stay the same.
The new owner, and you are Mr. Porzio?
No, I'm John Sapphire.
Oh, okay.
Super on Porzio.
Thank you. So just want to tell us what you plan to do there, so we have an idea, no change, it's going to be exactly the same, or what?
Yeah, we're running the events. We do, we have three other locations where we've been in the business a long time. This is my father, this is Jerry Sapphire.
Welcome.
He started Sapphire Manor in Sharon in 1977, so I took it over from them in the 2000, early 2000s. So we're just going to run it as-is, keep the restaurant there, keep all the employees. We might make some, you know, some cosmetic renovations, work in, you know, in that respect, but other than that, that's it.
Okay, any questions from the board? Anybody here has a comment? And it's a public hearing, so we'll take any comments. Seeing none, okay, we can take...
We need counsel if you have a phone call, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. Yeah, go ahead.
I was away when the date was set, and I'm just calling to get any questions to me. A captain answered, I see my clients want to pitch out about me.
You're paying this guy?
Yeah. All right, keep quiet over there. You're good.
Yeah, that's Lou.
That's Lou. Thanks, Lou.
Thank Lou Zinger.
Oh, good for Lou.
Okay, and any other comments?
I just, I wanted to thank George for your support all over the years, and you guys have big shoes to live up to because these guys have been great in the community. I was personally involved with our playground construction, you guys helped us out with that. So sad to see you guys go.
Yeah.
I know you're getting into the ice cream biz, right?
Well, we have an ice cream shop across from the Y.
Yep.
And I've been sick for about seven, eight years, so that's, my doctor's been screaming at me to retire, so a little less stress, take it easy. So we're part-time, so we're at.
I thank you.
Life is good.
Yeah, you've created a nice spot, so I hope it continues.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further comments? We'll close the hearing, and now we can vote on the transfer. So do we have a motion to approve the transfer of the liquor license to, yeah, right there, to, I'm sorry, Mon Ponset Events LLC, John Sapphire, Amy Sapphire owners, and Ronald E. Porzio, manager?
So moved.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you. I'll see you around, guys, from two up.
Appreciate it, man.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
And I'll see you when I see you.
See you, we'll see you. Good luck. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks a lot.
Welcome to Halifax.
Can we do the action plan?
Yes.
Greg, before the next appointment at 6:45, Halifax Action Plan for MBTA Communities?
So to give some background, the state has enacted zoning requirements for communities that have MBTA commuter rail or rapid transit in the community. So as a result, in order to be in compliance, the state has requested that we submit an action plan. This does not commit the town to changing any zoning or commit the town to adding the additional housing. Rather, it just says that we'll investigate the possibility of doing that. So I provided a draft action plan to the board for your review. It's pretty straightforward. We would look to apply for a grant to assist us with technical assistance and basically just review what our options are. As part of the zoning, the state would require 750 new housing units in the town and a density of up to 15 units per acre and a 50-acre minimum. So you have 50 times 15, you get the 750 units. But like I said, this doesn't require, this doesn't commit us to doing that, it just says we'll investigate it. And it allows us to stay in compliance until the end of 2024. If we do not submit this, we will not be in compliance, and we potentially lose out on significant grant funding from the state. We would not be eligible for grant funding from the state.
Does the, does the 750 units have to be in any one particular area?
So I believe 40 percent...
Better question would be, what's your proposal?
So, well, my proposal is just to investigate, you know, best opportunities to bring it, to apply for that grant, to look at this, bring in a professional to look at zoning. There is a vacant parcel that abuts the commuter rail station, that may be something to look at. The town, in order to be in compliance, the town doesn't have to build the units, it just has to zone for the units. So looking at that, 40% of the units have to be within a half-mile of the station, and then the other percentage can be anywhere in town. So, you know, there's proposals for potentially a 40B. If any of those units went through, those would be counted toward the 750 as well. So, but at this time, this is simply just submitting a plan, saying that we commit to looking into, looking into this.
750 units is a lot? Is that based on our size, or that's every single community in the state?
It's a, it's a threshold set by the state.
750, wow, that's crazy.
It's a threshold.
What will you have us do tonight? Vote to accept the plan?
Vote to submit the plan.
Submit, okay. Anybody on the board have any questions?
I just want to make sure that anything we do with this initial step, Cody, is not going to basically sign on any sort of dotted line for any sort of plan in the future, or make us tied to any sort of regulations or restrictions.
No, basically, we're saying that we will, we'll look into it, and that we'll explore the opportunities and, you know, try to bring something forward. If we bring in an expert, they present some zoning, if we move forward to town meeting and it gets voted down, then, you know, we can't, we can't do anything, we can't move anything forward. But we would just say we're, we're going to investigate and try to come up with something that would put us in compliance.
We would maintain right of refusal of any sort of plan or anything?
Yeah, we would, yeah, any sort of consultant we brought in, we would oversee.
Okay, Najah, this is true, you have things to say?
Yes, I do. Eighteen, ten, outside out. We voted on this last year as a slot board and said no. And the reasons are, is because in the beginning of this, you get a very short amount of money per, per unit. And also, there is, so like, if you get $10,000 for 20 units, and that's literally what it states in the law, then you do have a repayment plan at the back. But when you build all these units, it costs more than $10,000 to send the kids to school. It's more money for the roads and all that. We do not want to comply to this at all. We don't need the grant funding. This money is not going to repay us for the buildings that we would be putting in. It will not do that. So we can just not apply to it, and we won't get the money. But how's $10,000 going to help us when we have 750 units in town? You don't get $10,000 for all the 750 units, so it's a breakdown. I don't have the chart in front of me, I was not prepared to have this on. I found out about it 30 minutes before the meeting, or else I would have brought the law to us. But the front of the law, which I read at a planning board meeting last spring, does, has a chart that you get paid certain amounts per unit, but it does not add up to the whole entire amount. And then at the end is a repayment plan. But our town will never recover from that kind of development. And we already know that we have huge proposals in front of us now that a lot of our town does not want, and we do not have to comply with this law. To further go on, Plymouth has done it, down at Quodge Park, and they're about to lift the tracks. And then they won't even have a railway for any of those units anymore. We've seen it over on Phillips Road in Hanson, and the police go there on a regular basis, it's on the scanner on a regular basis, because they're basically layering people on top of each other. And it does nothing for our schools, our roads, our water supply, everything that we've been talking about. We do not have to ask, listen, all we're not going to do is we're not going to have a grant, and we're not going to have to spend money on an expert that's going to come here and rezone our town for things that we don't even want. Because I believe that our town has voted against multifamily zoning and changing of that multiple times at town meeting. So why would we even try to investigate this when it would be the downfall of the town?
Do you have, so I'm a little confused between the whole question about grants and so on, but what I understood you to say, and maybe we need to just get this straightened out, but was that it would prevent us from applying for any sort of grant? You seem to be talking about a specific grant.
No, it just allows us to apply for the Community One Stop for Growth under the state, which is 16 or 17 different grant programs through the state of Massachusetts that we would no longer be eligible for.
Which, you'd blanket for what?
Various different things, infrastructure grants, technical assistance grants, it's 16 or 17. And to be clear, by doing this, you're not voting for zoning or anything, you're simply saying, we'll look into it, and we'd be in interim compliance. What happens in the future, as far as actually enacting the zoning or approving the infrastructure to be built, that's, you know, that's down the road further. This is simply saying, we'll be in compliance for now and investigate whether it makes sense to zone certain areas or not.
Would we be in compliance if we said, no, we don't want?
We would not, no. This is a mandate from the state, so...
No, if we, if we accept the proposal, but then after investigation say, well, we don't want the 750 units?
We would not be in compliance. This would ultimately just buy us two years.
Okay.
So either way, we're not going to end up in compliance, if you think about it. We don't have to go down that road. The infrastructure that we'd be looking to get would be new schools, new roads, because we're going to have to widen. And where are we going to widen 106? All of our septic systems are at the road. We're going to have a major problem with any further redevelopment of our town, like in those numbers. It's, remember in the 80s when we had to have double sessions with the high schools and we had to send other kids to elementary school in other towns? We'll be looking right down at that. Except now, let's add to it that we've had a level-three drought. Situate has brown water, if they have water on a regular basis from doing these things. I urge you to look into Situate, Braintree, Weymouth, and look at Hanson starting to do it right now. It's not okay. Our water tables are all the same. We're not going to have enough water. And the infrastructures, the grants that we're going to have to go for, for infrastructure are going to be things that we're going to be doing to take on the 750 units that we just did. So it's just, it's money thrown after money. Do you know what I'm saying? And it'll change the entire dynamic of the town.
Okay, is there a question in the back?
I believe it was deadline, the end of this month?
It is, January 31st is the deadline to submit this.
I saw it on the agenda, so Chris Winnewith, 129 Service Street. So the state has a whole website, and then they've got all drop-down toolboxes, they help towns, like through all this stuff. And one of them was showing 750, and they were showing all the grants. And then you can drop down, you're looking at all the towns, some towns, like Hanson, got $100,000. Some towns, like Halifax Trails, might get forced upon us, they were getting grants for like $2 million to do the infrastructure, the roads, you know, to keep up with something like that, the state made us do. So it seemed like significant money in some of the grants you could lose. But I agree, too, 750 units of kids, it's like a rock and a hard place.
But we wouldn't be necessarily agreeing to do it, we would just be agreeing to look into it.
Correct. This, what you'd be voting on tonight is to submit an action plan that we would investigate it. That's all this is tonight.
So we could investigate it, and then decide not to, and then?
And then we'd be out of compliance at that point. But right now, if you did this, we agree to investigate it. If at the end of that, if there is no interest, then at that point, we'd be out of compliance. But we'd at least remain in interim compliance.
Which we is.
Correct.
What does it cost the town, Cody, to get into compliance as far as any sort of fees or, it's essentially just submitting?
Submitting this plan, and then they have a grant program that we could apply to, to help us conduct, you know, a study to determine what areas, if any, would be best to implement zoning and make recommendations, so there's really no cost to the town at this point.
But we don't want to do anything, like?
Not at this point, other than submit this plan and investigate the idea of the zoning. And it is zoning, that's all it is. You're not, even if you were to approve the zoning, you're not approving projects for the zoning. You're saying, this is the zoning, and this is the area that would allow for up to 750 units, if you got to that point.
But by, by looking into changing that zoning, are we removing any sort of controls that we have here in town?
Not by just looking into it, no. All we are is investigating. Any, any sort of zoning changes still has to go through the normal process and be approved by town meeting, if you get there. But this is simply an investigation.
We'd be hiring an expert, however much money that would be costing our town.
We would apply for a grant. We would apply for a grant. There's grant programs for towns.
But then there's always a tie in the grant. Like, for instance, let's go to Complete Streets. Complete Streets was a grant that was put in front of us. We had a $38,000 obligation fee to be in compliance with that. fee to be in compliance with that. Then we had to, if we did that, right in the implementation plan, it states that the Massachusetts Department of Transportation can now change any of your laws. These are the dangers that we get into with grants and things like that. So I would urge you not to just do this, to maybe be able to get money. Because as Mr. Winowitz said, $100,000 on a grant wouldn't offset, I mean, think about how much it costs to do a school. Think about how much money we just paid to do a bridge. $2 million isn't gonna save this town if we put 750 units in. Please, I beg of you. You haven't read the law. We're asking too many questions. There's too many red tape things inside of these things. We don't want it as a town in general. We don't want that, where you see what happens at 40B meetings, right? So apply this here, I beg of you.
Any other questions?
Is there an option to give us a little extra time to look at this? And I know we're at the end of the month. I don't know if that entails a special meeting or something of that effect.
It has to be submitted by the 31st. So if you wanted to.
It's the 24th.
A week from today.
One more point. We denied it last year, and there was a deadline. They will have it again. Please read it. Do not do this tonight. Do not rush into this, please.
This was done last year?
It was presented last year.
Yeah, the chairman voted.
Voted down to not do it.
And there was a deadline last year as well. It is, think about this. To get grants, we're gonna need to build infrastructure for 750,000 units. It's not gonna be, we're already in dire straits. We already don't have enough water. We don't need this.
Well. I just don't see, we're not doing it. We're just doing, we're literally just applying for a grant, saying, yes, we're in compliance, compliance for two years. We're not changing the zoning. We're not changing anything.
We'll have to pay for an expert.
We're getting grants for it?
We would apply for that grant, correct.
But Najah, that's what I was saying, that Complete Streets grant, by just applying and obligating to it, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation can now change any of your laws. So then they can go circumvent you and do things beyond. So like, read the entire law and be completely educated. Don't push go on. You think you're gonna get money. It's kinda like, think about it as your own household, right? You might not wanna do something if it's gonna bind you over here and end up costing you more.
Suppose we don't ask for a grant, we don't hire anybody, and we just submit the plan?
We have to show some sort of effort.
Well, we have a zoning bylaw committee. Isn't that good enough to say we're looking into it?
If we can prove that we're actually looking into it. I mean, we need to show some, some effort that we're actually looking into it. If at the end of the effort, it's determined that this is not what the town wants, and it's not voted to move forward, then that's one thing. But they could repeal the compliance if we, if we just sit on it and don't do anything.
Please, Donald Hennehy is.
So we're not in compliance, but we don't, but there's no, other than the issue about the grants and so on, we're not in any of the sort of danger. There's nothing else that's gonna go wrong.
At this time, if we're not in compliance, we lose the opportunity to grant funding. The housing authority loses part of their earmark from the state as well.
Yes, sir.
Amy, I agree with you 100%, what you're saying. But what happens if we say no, and then we get a 40B that wants to go in down there for another 400 units? Now we've got no grants, and we're still gonna put, deal with the 40B that might wanna go in down here. I mean, the 40B, to me, is more of a problem than, than this grant that we're talking about right now. If the 40B can go in down there, we all have a say.
But it's all tied in. And you're talking about at the Rose Garden, down by the MDTA station?
Yeah.
You can't build there. It's water. It's a protection zone.
It still gets 60 acres down there. There's 60 acres. It used to be a flower garden down there. So there's gotta be some land that's feasible, go there. I mean, that's the only problem I see. I mean, this 40B we're having down here, I mean, the density is atrocious.
I think it's time, I think it's time that the residents stand up. We don't have enough water. Look at what's happening to Kingston, Situate, Braintree, Weymouth. We did, we did as a state go against it in 2011, but now, our entire state, not entire state, but a lot of the northern South Shore is experiencing this and having the problems come to the forefront. Braintree's fighting it. They're regretting it. Let's not jump off the bridge they did, and let's not.
But that could be an issue that we could bring up. And we can bring this up with this 40B down here, that there's not enough water, there's no.
So we're kinda, we're kinda mixing everything up here.
But I'm just looking at it, saying, if we say no, and then we lose all the grant money that we could get for anything, whatever it is.
We're not gonna get it anyway.
And then they put a 40B in down here. We're in a worse, worse position.
We're not gonna get that grant money anyway.
Amy, Amy, let's, let's, let's not have a debate. Mr. Joy, let's, you guys have to talk to us, otherwise it's gonna get out of control. Mr. Winowitz.
I think, like Mr. Joy was saying, we can't have 750 units right now. The town can't handle it.
I agree.
But if builders go other routes, like the Halifax Trails with 250 units, and somewhere else they want another 250 units, and now we have no grants to help support those, because we sent no to this. It's kinda, it's no good option, it doesn't seem. And do we lose Chapter 90 money, too? Because I've heard a couple times people saying that, like, Steve Hayward would lose all his money for the highway platform?
Not that I'm aware of, not, not for this.
Okay. Anything new to talk about here? Anything further?
I would just point out that $100,000 won't do anything for us. So like, we're only not taking money that isn't gonna do enough for us to offset it anyways.
All right. So this is what I think. Having listened to everybody, and I actually agree with everybody, I just think that the prudent course would be to submit it for now, and see, and just to submit it for now and see where we go with it. If it turns out that we can investigate it, and we can come up perhaps in that investigation with good reasons not to have that additional type of zoning, maybe that's, that's an advantage in the long run. So.
One more.
One more point.
The entire town is, is standing against all of these things right now. So you'd be voting against all of the people that put us into office.
Okay.
And they're telling us they don't want these things. Look at Kingston. We don't wanna investigate something we already don't wanna know and open up a can of worms, especially when we haven't read all of the red tape in it. I have. Please listen to me.
I hear you. Okay.
Please don't open the can of worms.
Mr. Go last speed.
Go last speed. No, I'm here to speed. One thing, when I was researching this, is I noticed that all the towns that have been approved for this, that are doing this, are all located off major thoroughbys. Interstate Route 3, 495, 44. We do not have access to these kinds of routes. So we really wouldn't be a good fit for this anywhere, because we don't have a major highway coming through town. We're in the middle of the county. All these developments are occurring off major routes. So I don't think there's any, we don't have a reason to put that here.
I still agree. I think that 750 units is too many units for Halifax, no matter what. But, but that's not, that's, that's, that's a state thing. That's nothing that we are selecting. So my view would be to go along with what the town administrator suggests, file the application, or put us in compliance, and see where it goes. That's what I would do. So I make that motion. It's up to you guys to second it and to vote. What do you think?
I just feel like I need more, selfishly, I need a little bit more time to, to look at this. And I apologize that I wasn't ready for this meeting, for this, this agenda item. I wouldn't wanna be, and I'm sorry, I may put a motion forward, but I just wouldn't wanna be short-sighted. To your point, if a 40B tries to come in, we lose the possibility of grants if we don't comply. So I can see both, I can see both sides of this, and I don't want it to come down to like a chance flip of a coin thing. And again, I don't know if, if we can make the timeline work before the end of the month, if that's something the board would be open to.
Excuse me, we have to leave the doors open, because this is a public meeting. If they're too loud, we'll go in the hallway and tell them to be quiet. But if we close the doors, then all of a sudden, it's no longer a public meeting. Thank you. Sorry.
No, it's okay. It's okay. So that's where I'm coming from. I don't know what the board's take is on that. And again, I know you have a.
I don't know how we can get it done before 31st. What's that next, Tuesday? What's today? Today's the 24th.
Yeah, it'd be a week from today.
We have one next Tuesday, if anything.
Not to commit you guys even more, but.
Next Tuesday, we have nothing scheduled, unless you wanna put this on.
But it has to be.
I need to get a, I don't know if there's a time. I think as long as we get it in.
On the 31st.
On the 31st.
Or next Monday, it is.
Monday, I'm, I do have something Tuesday evening at 7:00.
What about Monday?
I can do, there's a finance screening meeting, but I don't anticipate it taking a long time.
I could be there. Monday?
What time?
You guys tell me.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Good.
And that's Monday, the 30th?
Yes.
So I'll withdraw that last motion, and we'll just, what we'll do is make a motion to table this until Monday, the 30th of January, 6 o'clock, where we will hold a discussion and make a, make a decision about it.
Would you like, I can ask the Old Colony Planning Council, you know, they have expertise in this. I had spoken with them. Would you like to see if I can have a representative come in and give a brief presentation on it?
The more information we get on this, the better, because this is the situation we're in here, where, you know, everybody is giving us their view on what they think the law is, and we don't, we don't know.
Absolutely. That'd be great.
Okay. All right. So Monday at 6:00, that's the motion?
So moved.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. All right. Just one more meeting to add.
Sorry, sorry, guys. Sorry, public.
No, thank you.
Just wanna look into it.
Thank you.
Okay. We're running late. I apologize, but that's what happens sometimes. So Mrs. McDonald is here somewhere?
She is not. She could not make it.
So we're not gonna hold that?
No, the board's looking for an update on the operation there. Selectman Seelig and I attended a walkthrough today, so if you'd like, you can.
Sure.
Sure. They, they brought us onto the property and had folks from their company there. They had their inspector there. They had their legal counsel there, and basically gave us a tour to kind of reiterate the fact that they're up to state standards as far as basically having a soil, a soil property there. Everything appeared to be in compliance from everything that I have read. I did bring up some issues that some of the residents had brought up as far as dust remediation. They said they have a dust remediation plan, which is on par with the state. They, as far as water goes, they said they have their test wells around the facility, that they're constantly checking their water to make sure everything is safe. As far as the truck issues, we have trucks that unfortunately sometimes go down Circuit Street as opposed to the entrance to their facility. I spoke with them about improving their signage in the front of the facility. The signage is a little bit lacking, so I can see why every once in a while, a truck would miss the entrance and then have to turn around. And then we have our issue on Circuit Street. I did find it informative. She did say that if anyone has any questions, she gave us her contact information. She wants to operate as open and transparent a business as possible, so that if anyone had any questions or issues, she said, feel free to pass along their information. So that is the update I got.
Okay. Najah, anything? Mr. Winowitz?
I just had questions where it got to this point, because I believe years ago, the town voted at a town meeting not to expand that site, or the height elevation of it. And then this started going on with the trucks breaking the road down. Now there's questions, how much they go bring in there over time? I see the state's now prudent for one and a quarter million tons of contaminated soil. Maryland's Landen's website shows they can receive over 2 million tons of contaminated soil. They say they have a plan that meets the regulations, but who's monitoring it, that they're following the plan? Because I've shown Mr. Seelig, the trucks leaving there with no water, and the dust blowing out to 106 and towards the residences. You can see it in the hot summer months. They might water with some aerial photos just where the trucks are driving, but the whole top of the landfill is bad dirt, with contaminated soil, could be blown miles all over Halifax.
Okay. Mrs. Winowitz?
Yeah, Deb, 1066, I would have thought the town learned that lesson with this landfill 35 years ago. 35 years ago, that landfill, it was voted at town meeting to never let it expand. I was a resident in that area at the time with well water, no access to town water, and our water was contaminated. Those bogs were not in use for years. They were contaminated. It's, it was never supposed to happen. I don't know how it got opened to do this. And if you could tell me what the definition is of contaminated soil, what is in it? What is contaminated soil?
I don't know. I gotta be honest. I don't think I can give you that definition.
Do I?
You remember?
I remember the landfill. I remember we closed it, and I haven't thought about it in 35 years, honestly. But I did drive by the other day, and I did take a look at it. But I wonder, so what is it you're objecting to? The fact that they have a business running there at all, or how it's run? I know the trucks are a problem. We've seen the emails. And honestly, I don't know why the truck drivers would go on Circuit Street anyway, because it's like nowhere near the landfill. So I don't, I quite understand that, but.
I think old GPS, it tells them to go along.
You have their entrance.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I guess, I guess if you're not paying attention, you can say, well, it's right there. So I get that. But what is it you're, like, what is it your?
Just the continued contamination. We already said no back then. Now we're adding to it. We're talking about water. If these 40Bs start coming in our water system, we only have one aquifer we're using right now. I talked to someone in the Conservation Commission. We basically have two aquifers split, one in west and one east on Halifax. Two well locations, now we're using one. I know this concern with Morse Brothers, if something ever gets contaminated, then we lose wells there. Now we got this dump that's right on the edge of our other aquifer.
So what would you suggest? That we close it down? That they don't operate there at all, or?
Yeah, I mean, we voted for that years ago, not to expand it.
So I have to check on that. I don't know, I don't know that circumstances to why.
The vote was something like 400 to 40. That was 35 years.
I can't tell you, because I don't know what that operation is about right now. I honestly don't know what they.
I just think the wording contaminated soil is frightening.
I mean, this is like six years ago, we discovered it. Started seeing all the trucks. It was really bad. We'd have convoys of 618-wheelers and a deadhead, and they're all backing through the neighborhood. That went on for months, trying to figure out what's going on. And then finally found them going down the old dump road. But back then, it was only approved from the Bridgewater side of the landfill, and you could not visibly see at all what was going on over there or hear it. That went on for years. They called the Bridgewater DEP and the Halifax Order Health. Halifax said, you know, it has nothing to do with Halifax yet, but they'll be thinking public things, will advertise it, you know, see everyone's opinion on it. I called Bridgewater, I called Bridgewater. They said the line was leaking. There was 14 heavy metals, PCVs all going out into the wetlands, because the line was all splitting. That had to be fixed before Maryland could start adding more dirt and make it bigger into a huge mountain. Worried about the dust, like I said, dust with PCVs or heavy metals, blown into residences, you know, you got high on the stage, you got everyone on a summit on the backside. You got this side of Halifax and Circuit.
So I need to understand how that even got, what, what's going on over there. I don't know personally. I just don't know. So I'll take a look at that. I know they wanted to come in and explain their operation to us. I know, because she mentioned that, she had a phone call about two months ago. But no, obviously, they're not here to talk about it. So can you take the point on this in terms of these questions that they keep raising about the landfill, and then we'll investigate, we'll get a, go and do some history and remember what we did 30 years ago on the landfill, and when McDonald Industries gets involved? It's an education for us anyway, because we're new to this issue.
If, if, if the public would like to email me questions, I can bring them to them and get answers. So, oh, sorry.
And one other thing to say, like, part of the approval, that the towns and the DEP in Lakeville gave approval, it's a 600-page document. But one of them is, there are no private residential drinking water wells within a half mile of the site. Boston Environmental Corp. backed McDonald Industries, obtained the listed wells in Bridgewater and Halifax, recorded with the Water Department Board of Health, that provided a private well use research report to the Mass DEP and municipal agencies in March 2019. And the results provide in Penance 1, no known domestic drinking wells over within a half mile of the site. There's also a page here with a radius map. His houses, I have neighbors who drink in stove wells.
Okay.
So all false information given to the DEP to approve this.
Okay. You've raised a lot of issues. We don't know the answers. We'll try and find out as fast as we can and see what we can do about it. All right. Any other discussion about McDonald Industries? Okay. Let's go on to the beautification committee. Now, this isn't gonna be controversial, too, is it?
No.
Do you know what I'm hoping?
We usually do a cleanup day in the spring, but usually when we do the cleanup day on Sunday, or Saturday, sorry, we can't get everybody in town to do it. So we're proposing that we have a week. And it starts roughly a week. On the Saturday, the 16th, or the, I'm sorry, the 15th of April. And on the 23rd, which is Earth Day, is a Saturday, we'll have an educational fair. We've already lined up, if you guys agree, to have the bottle drive for the Cub Scopes, Boy Scopes at the same time, and then do things that will have a lot of activity in the whole town together. Like, we've talked about having Nazrals sell their flowers and things like that, so that we can get everybody here, and then more people will pick up trash, and then we can educate them. So go, actually, I did the 22nd, because, oh, sorry, I didn't have the exact date. So Earth Day and the week before. My, thank you, Joe.
So do you want us to approve use of the lawn for the 22nd of April?
Sure.
Yes. From like, we haven't decided exactly how long, but when we did our vendor fair last year, we started at 8:00 in the morning, and we're done by like, was it like 3:00? When we had the vendor fair last year was like 8:00 to 3:00. I don't, I don't know. You don't remember? Something like that. But we. But we would be mostly outside and somewhat down in the great hall, but it would be, instead of it being a vendor fair, it would be educational. And these would be some of the things that we would be looking at having. So that everybody can hear, it would be, we're looking to get four fifth and sixth grade essay winners on plastic pollution and litter, and giving out prizes and maybe a water bottle. This is Shirley's idea. Shirley's gonna contact the principal. The Conservation Board would like them to have a table. Girl Scope table, Boy Scope bottle drive, popcorn machine, pony rides, cornhole, bake sale. Green Hanson is a trash and litter program, and Hanson, have them come over here. Shirley has displays of cigarette butts, plastic water bottles, and nips, and straws, and I'm sure she'll add on to that at some point, but she'll show that to give an idea to the people of exactly what's being picked up around town. Some music, an invasive species table, Plymouth Beekeepers, the Civil Lake Recycling Club. Maybe get somebody from the burrage to come and give information on the burrage. There's a nice man, Phil Clement, that has local walking trails that he could talk about, he could give out information on them, having the four H. And of course, some of these things won't all work out, but also like Mark Valentine things. So just as an idea, it would be more like bringing together the community and everything we have to offer in educating. Also, Colby Silva is trying to figure out how we can maybe raise money, it's her, to get a water water filling station like we have out here, down at the snack shack at the fields. So we're trying to like, make it greener, because if all the kids had a reusable cup and went there and took water from that, it would...
Okay. So when you say vendors, you mentioned that, but I didn't notice it on here. Do you mean like food trucks or stuff like that, or?
We haven't gone totally into the food trucks yet, but we would be considering that, correct? The food trucks? That we weren't excited about that. We weren't really excited about that because of how much...
I'm just trying to get an idea of what you're looking for.
I think that maybe I said that last year we had a vendor fair, and this year it's going to be more of an educational fair.
Oh, I see. Okay. And so to do all this, you want us to reserve for you the twenty-second of April?
Yep.
The town, the town green. Did you say the town hall also?
Just like the lower level and the great hall.
Okay. And what would you be doing upstairs there?
Maybe have some vendors that had information inside, just like have people pass in through, coming through, be able to use the bathrooms, something more than that, really.
Okay. Do we normally, do we control the great hall or does the clerk's office?
It's the clerk's office.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So we can ask them, but just like the hall in general, we will relay that, but to run this by you guys first and see if you guys thought it would be okay. And then we'd need use of the dumpster for over seven, eight days that we'd be picking up trash.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
Fantastic. Wonderful work. Yeah, that's, it looks like a lot of work to me, but.
Having fun.
So I would take a motion to give the beautification committee permission to use the town green on April twenty-second for their Earth Day celebration. However you want to call it, you call it whatever you want, but I'll call it that.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Anybody have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. If you settle this, you know, with the dates and times and stuff, and you can send us because there's something, and we'll broadcast it?
Of course.
Okay.
We'll keep you guys posted.
Just in case you, what, to the twenty-ninth through this school vacation?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, no, thank you.
I just wanted, oh, wait a minute.
All right. Very good. Thank you. It's nice to have a positive thing going.
Thanks for your work.
Okay. Seven fifteen, Lori Costa is here somewhere. Oh, there you are. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. You're on, you're on. What would you like?
All right. Well, I have a little bit of background statement I wanted to share. First of all, thank you so much, you know, hearing the other things that you talk about. Clearly, this is, it's important to us, but you have very big responsibilities for this town. So thank you all for your service and your consideration for the well-being of all of us. So thanks for hearing me tonight. I come as president and a director of Halifax Pride, and I'm requesting you to the Town Hall Green for Halifax Pride 2023 on Saturday, June seventeen. I know I sent this to Pam, I'm not sure if you got it, but I did send an email with some of the different things that we've done so far. But this will be our third celebration of LGBTQ plus pride in Halifax. Our first was a standout in 2021 along Route 106, which was well received. The reason I wanted to provide some background, because you are a new board, I think it would help to clarify and answer questions you and the community may have. So after our, our first standout was so well received, we started planning a larger celebration where people could gather, interact, and celebrate. Our goal is to promote community love and understanding that we are all neighbors and the queer community and allies exist in all walks of life. On March twenty-second of 2022, I presented our plans to the board's selectmen seeking approval. We discussed the details we're evolving, the date and the town bylaw requirements were also discussed. The date was approved contingent that we met town requirements and bylaws for Board of Health, HPD, and HFD, and live entertainment. On April nineteenth, we were told by the board of selectmen that the date we had to be changed due to a scheduling oversight at Town Hall. We had already began promoting the event, and this caused us to lose some of our vendors and entertainment, as they were not available at the new date. After finding a new date and getting approval from the two-person board, we encouraged the board to show support for Halifax Pride. We asked the library to attend and continue to work with HPD and Board of Health. Our fire chief had deferred to our police chief for our plans. We learned a great deal along the way. You know, we were very new to planning an event with a municipality, so it was a very good learning experience for us. And now I feel like we've learned so much that we are much better suited for this year. But one important realization was the need to ask more questions and to confirm with all involved town departments that town requirements were met. There were times when we received conflicting information, and I don't think it was due to anyone's fault, but different departments had different understandings. So by asking more questions and just confirming with everyone, it would have helped us to make sure that, that everyone was aligned. And there were some, some concerns that the event wouldn't happen because of these kind of like aha moments. So key to overcoming these challenges was persistent communication and questioning, so that town officials could be aligned with what was required. We met each requirement the town asked of us. We were very concerned with making sure that we met all town requirements. There were delays in getting our final approval for live entertainment from the board of selectmen due to conflicts from several parties. Our entertainment was not finalized until right after this event was approved, or we got the approval for the entertainment. In fact, we almost didn't have a DJ at the last minute. For these reasons, we didn't announce our performers until the week of the event. As you may have heard, this caused a small number of loud voices to condemn our event, condemn the board of selectmen, and to make vulgar and hateful statements on social media. On advice of town council, our library was told they could not, they would not be able to join us, and the select person who was scheduled to give the welcoming address was also advised not to attend. While we were disappointed by this and feel this was an inappropriate ask of the town attorney, we understood. That being said, Halifax Pride 2020 was a tremendous success. It was well attended, our vendors did very well with sales, and the entertainment was positive, beautiful, and tasteful. It was a family, it was the family-friendly event that we promised. Chief Chavez attended and provided positive feedback to me in person. So if all's well that ends well, why do you need to hear all this from me now? I asked myself the same question in October during the campaign period for our special town election, for the two vacant seats Mr. Nazarla and Mr. Bruno occupy now. At that time, questions were asked to candidates that referenced the entertainment in Halifax Pride. I was disappointed by some of the answers given by some candidates who had no knowledge of what actually occurred at our event. Instead, their opinions were formed based on assumptions and other performances or events held in our towns. This is, this is the misinformation I hope to clarify tonight. In closing, I will say that I'm a twenty-one-year resident of Halifax. I have volunteered in many capacities in our community, most of which have been to support children. Halifax is a, has wonderful people, but there are times in my experience that the climate has been difficult, if you are different, or if you're considered different. I have witnessed firsthand in my family that exact thing. Halifax Pride is intended to provide a safe, welcoming space where people are accepted. It's not a place for conflict and controversy. It's also not mandatory to attend. Therefore, I humbly ask for your support and approval of the event on June seventeenth, 2023, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And one thing I would like to add is we have, we are going through the process right now of becoming a nonprofit organization, and we've also received a thousand-dollar grant from the Halifax Cultural Council to put for, towards this year's event expenses.
Okay. Any questions for the board? Do we have the seventeenth of June, is it available?
Well, it is available, because when she had asked from the beginning, I put it on there and I wrote tentative on the calendar, so nothing else is there.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, I put it in there.
All right. And so exactly what do you look, want us to approve? The use of the town green?
So we'd like to use the town green. I'll work with the clerk to reserve the great room, which we did last year, for our performers. We will, we do intend to have live entertainment, which will include a DJ and drag performances. We are hoping to get the high school choir, they, I'm not sure if you are aware, but they recently did Rent, which is a very LGBTQ plus provocative and positive musical. And there's a beautiful song that we have already discussed with the director about having them perform, so.
So you're going to need a live entertainment permit?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have that yet.
We do intend to have vendors. My understanding is that based on last year, there's no quarry sorry requirement, because this is not a school event.
You need to have the Board of Health involved.
Yeah, I've already been in touch with Valerie. We will have porta potties, we will make sure our food vendors are licensed upstairs. We have the large event permit, because we had such a great attendance last year, we're not a small event or a large event. We've also, Sam, who's here from our committee, is working on getting us event insurance where the town would be included in the liability.
Okay. How about parking? What do you do for parking?
So last year, we had parking, you know, in the back lot and also with the library. Our event is, we're meeting the lawn, I think, from eleven to three. I think it will be scheduled from twelve to three.
This is on a Saturday, right?
It's a Saturday.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, the library parking lot has like soccer games, a library of people in there?
Yeah, no, understood. The majority of the people would be coming after hours. We had a pretty good attendance rate last year, and there was never a lack of parking. I mean, you were kind of, yeah, I don't know, because the turnover pretty much... Right. And again, I think that's kind of the great thing about it, is people aren't coming and staying. It's, you know, a multi-hour event, so they come and they leave and...
Okay. So I would recommend that we, the police chief hasn't chimed in on this at all, right? Okay.
He actually did respond, I don't know if he included...
Oh, is he there? Are you there, chief? He was.
Yes, I am.
Good, thank you. Glad to hear from you. So you heard the description of the June seventeenth Pride Day, right?
I have, I've been communicating with Mrs. Costa. And I... Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
And so, you know, what happened, I guess, same, sit us the stuff we had last year, you had one detail officer, I don't believe there'll be a need for a second officer. Like she said, I did attend the event. It was, you know, very well done, no issues there, so I don't foresee any other, any safety concerns on my, on my end permit for my device.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. So what we are going to do, what we could do tonight is just basically approve the use of the town green, because we don't have anything else in front of us yet. You do have to get the entertainment permit to us, and you do have to deal with Board of Health on the food trucks and the town clerk on upstairs.
I want to add, the police detail was paid privately to you. You can put the detail off, too.
Well, any detail would have to be, yeah. Unless it's an actual town event, like town meeting, then whoever's running the event, if there's a police detail required, that's your obligation.
I just want to mention too, we did have some folks who probably emailed you expressing support and giving some feedback about last year's event. Alex Haggerty was one of our speakers, and when he heard we were coming tonight, he asked if he could come and show some support, so.
If that be okay. I'm not, I'm not a Halifax resident.
That's okay, you don't have to be. Just tell us who you are, so we can put it in the record.
Sure. Is it easier here or?
Whatever you prefer.
Okay, thank you.
And so just to announce yourself.
Okay, sure. Alex Haggerty, five one five Summer Street of the town of Abington. Thank you for allowing me the privilege to speak before you tonight, to share my support for Halifax Pride in celebration of LGBTQ pride as proposed by Lori Costa Klein of Halifax. My name is Alex Haggerty, five one five Summer Street of the town of Abington. I proudly serve as a selectman in the town of Abington. However, my remarks tonight are not on behalf of my town, but rather speaking as an individual, in individual capacity. Last year, Lori Costa Klein and the organizers of Halifax Pride invited me to speak at the second annual Halifax Pride on the town green. Halifax Pride had state representatives Cutler, Lenatra, and I speak as part of the festivities for the family-friendly pride celebration. I had the opportunity to share my experiences living as a gay man, the successes, obviously the challenges, and acceptance from loved ones and the community. I'm proud to be historic for my town. I serve as Abington's first openly gay selectman. Typically, I'm pretty conservative when it comes to my celebration of LGBTQ pride. In other terms, leading by example is my way of celebrating. I feel it's important for LGBTQ youth and adults as part of their own experience, as part of their own acceptance of who they are, to see and hear from people just like them. To be seen as equal people of society, so they can be confident in themselves, achieve success they desire, and shine bright, perhaps like a rainbow. I was given the opportunity to share my real-life experiences and message of acceptance, as well as joining the festivities of the great and fun day. I hope my message was able to help others. It was my understanding that there had been concerns from some in the Halifax community about the entertainment of the day, specifically the drag queens. Halifax Pride has always been advertised as a family-friendly event. As I said, I'm pretty conservative when it comes to my celebration of LGBTQ pride. However, I can attest to the family-friendly, family-friendly nature of the drag performances. Speaking as a lover and frequent performer of theater, I understand the importance of age-appropriate material for younger audiences. The acts were tastefully done, outfits eloquently suited for all ages, and music choices were family-friendly. And let's be honest, who doesn't like some Katy Perry and Gloria Gaynor? The Halifax Pride drag performances were not like the provocative and inappropriate-for-children ones we see trending on TikTok or social media or on YouTube. They were clean, fun, and of joy to watch. And just as a culture reminder, Ursula the Sea Witch from The Lurdu Mermaid was modeled off the late drag queen, excuse me, Divine. off the late drag queen Divine. And Ursula is known as one of the greatest beloved Disney characters of all time. Didn't think I was gonna be this emotional, sorry.
It's okay.
Drag is in the arts and can be tastefully done for a broad audience, as Halifax Pride has done. Our society celebrates diversity in various ways, from culture, religions, ethnicities, et cetera. In conclusion, I encourage you to approve the Halifax Pride to continue their family-friendly celebrations on my testimony of acceptance for all. And thank you so much for allowing me to speak and share my story and how great Halifax Pride was last year, so thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the board? So we're really not approving anything. I just want to be clear about that. But we're doing the same thing for you folks that we just did for the beautification committee, which we do for the Boy Scouts, which we'll do for the historical society when they sell mums, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is a public property, and you are entitled to use the public property just like anybody else's. So it's not like we're taking a vote in support or against. You're asking us permission to use the property, and that's what we're gonna vote on, which I don't think will be a problem anyways. But you do have to follow all the other rules, like you know.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the use of the town green on June 17th, as requested by the Pride Committee.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much. We'll be back with our interesting department.
Okay, very good. Good luck. All right. 7/30, we're right back on schedule. Halifax Mobile Home Park Association. Give it for that.
This is what I'm really, just said it was a family event.
You just want to throw in a few other barbs on the other stuff, right? All right, give us a minute to look at the...
Yeah, just hold on one sec.
This is the, yeah, transfer that we just moved on.
Okay. Mrs. Widdowich, you're here for the Mobile Home Park Association Grant for Trees.
I am. Deb Widdowich, 60th St. Lloyd Drive at the Halifax Mobile Home Park. I am also the Rock Residential Community Association New York. And with her is Sheila Carroll. She's our new board president at the community. And Paula Smith, she's the board secretary.
Congratulations on your elevations.
Thank you.
Here we go.
What I wanted to ask you, and hopefully you would agree to it, is maybe to write us a community development law for the removal of dangerous trees. I did drop off a lot of information. I don't know if we had time to look at it.
Is there a copy of what the grant is?
I'm sure it's a grant you're familiar with. We do qualify. It is a grant that the town would have to write on our behalf. It wouldn't cost the town anything, except it would need to be a couple of years, and the deadline is March.
So is this a grant you want us to...
You would be required to write the grant on our behalf.
Okay. And is that, what, you have to just fill out forms? Or how does that, how does he write the grant?
It's a full application.
It's a full application.
Okay.
It can be done on mine now, which is, yeah. But the reason we're asking, and I think you know, is that the park never approaches the town forever. We're 600 residents that are a self-supporting community, where a multimillion-dollar not-for-profit corporation, self-funded, and we're having a terrible problem with dangerous trees that we inherited when we bought the park five years ago. And in the last five years, we have had two storms, wherein each storm, over 70 homes got hit. They're elderly, they're frightened. We have spent close to $300,000 of our own money, taking down quite a few hundred trees. At last estimate, we have 1,000 more to take down, costs $900,000.
These are trees in the park itself?
Trees in the park that are too close, too big, dying, and they're coming down. In fact, just two months ago, 3:00 AM, no storm, no wind, a tree came down and hit the Dalton home in the Bedlam. Luckily, Mrs. Dalton is already in the hospital, Mr. Dalton was able to move quickly. Very lucky that no one has been hurt. In one of those storms, a tree came down and hit an oil tank and ruptured it. That was our cleanup, and it was costly. The oil seeped into the ground. So we're asking if this is something that you would do for us. I don't know if you're also aware, we're the highest taxpayer in the Town of Halifax, $163,000 a year. And that does not include the $5,000 a month that we pay the town in other taxes. And we require very little services. We plow our own streets, we pay our own streetlights, we replace our own storm rings, and we rarely, our 600 residents that really don't come to you, and we are not. We, of course, would give you any assistance that you needed in getting this done, so I'm hoping that you will consider it. I do have letters for you from our property manager, previous fire chief, because he's the one who responded to all the storms, and numerous reasons.
Cody, do you want to explain to us what she's asking for us to do?
Ultimately, it would be the town submitting a grant application. The town would be responsible for the funds. It would be the town's full responsibility, so...
Meaning, we would have to hire the contractors?
We would have to oversee the project.
You would oversee.
So, you know, just to be fair and equitable to everybody, if you did do this, you may run into a situation down the road where another association or nonprofit group could ask the town to do the same thing.
Well, it wouldn't cost us anything, though.
Well, I mean, we would have to oversee the project. We would ultimately be responsible for the project, the town would.
Okay. How about our tree warden, who is the highway surveyor? Have we spoken to him at all about this? I assume he'd be the guy to oversee that.
If not, there also comes in, if the town is responsible for a job this size, there's procurement laws we would have to follow. We may have to procure the project. We'd have to check with council as it would be town funds being used on technically private property, through a grant.
Really wouldn't be town funds because it would be the grant money that you have basically turned over to use.
Right.
And it wouldn't be anymore now.
It would, but it would have to come through the town. It would be awarded to the town.
Administered through us.
Right.
Who would do the actual administering?
We would have to.
No, I mean, procedurally, how, maybe you would know, how we handle that?
The money would, the state would grant us the money, and I would assume that it's not a reimbursement grant. If it's a reimbursement grant, we have, you know, put the money up front and they reimburse us. So as long as it's not a reimbursement grant, they would, the state would give us the money, and we would be responsible for making sure that the invoices that come through are valid invoices, the work was done, and that's why, what Cody's talking about as far as having someone oversee the project, it should be someone from the town overseeing it.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Do we have to hire somebody to do that?
I don't know what our internal capacity is. I mean, a $900,000 job, it's, I would assume, quite extensive, and ultimately, we're responsible, so any misuse of funds or anything like that, which I don't anticipate, but we would be on the hook for reporting, oversight of the project, submit reports.
Is that from one company?
No, we're required to get five bids for any job that we do over $5,000.
And that was the...
The last bid that we got was $900,000.
The lowest one?
Yes.
And also, we're paying, we would have to pay prevailing wage, which makes it more expensive.
Right.
I was wondering that.
Well, it would be the tree company.
Yeah, but we would have to administer. If we hire somebody, we have to pay prevailing wage. We have to procure it.
The tree company has to then pay their employees prevailing wage, which would make their price go higher.
Right. Prevailing wage is really the union scale?
Yes.
Basically, that's what it is, so it's always higher than, you know, than maybe an independent...
Put in some more. Put in...
Well, my question is, do we know, do we know if this grant will cover the entirety of the project, I guess?
It would depend what is awarded. The full amount may not be awarded, and then, you know, we take down 200 trees.
Right. A situation of you would, you folks would try to get as much as you could, and then target the most dangerous trees that you would have.
I believe a project that size for that amount of money would not, it wouldn't be just go out and get five prices. Would have to go out with an RFP.
We would have to procure through our requests for proposals.
The trees are marked, actually. The trees are marked. We have them marked.
Unfortunately, as soon as we, as soon as the funds come to us and we're involved, the laws change significantly. Procurement laws be followed, Chapter 30B, prevailing wage must be followed. So we would have to bid it out, the contractor would have to be with the town, we'd have to oversee the procurement, prepare bid specifications.
Well, how would we do the bid specifications unless we had somebody in town that could do that?
Internally, we'd have to work to put them together. Potentially, depending on the scope of projects, you hire engineers to assist you, you know, with bid specifications because they're very specific.
Would they be part of a grant?
They could be.
How would they, well, you would have to put the grant in for a specific line item for preparation, I guess?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Anybody from the board have any thoughts, questions?
To Deb's point, she brings up a lot of good, good points that they are our biggest taxpayer. They don't usually require a lot of our services, ambulances every once in a while. They plow their own roads. I think it'd be a good faith gesture to try to, try to help the situation out. I know you bring up other associations. I just don't foresee, and maybe I'm wrong, there's no association in town that's nearly as large as...
Twin Lakes.
Yeah, you have Twin Lakes.
But I think what they're talking about, though, at least from their perspective, is a grant, state grant, I guess, right, to handle the trees. So what they're proposing is that, well, it won't cost us anything. What we don't know is whether we can administer it without any costs, right? We still don't know that yet.
There'd certainly be a cost. We just don't know what the cost would be.
But that could be taken from that grant.
From the grant.
Right.
And whatever the grant comes out to say it's only $400,000.
Well, then they only can cut down 400 trees or whatever.
Well, or they can only cut down 350 trees because then, whatever it costs us, we take out of that grant.
Exactly.
I would like to get the highway surveyor tree warden's opinion on this. I mean, I would think, I think he's, I think he's the tree warden.
He is.
He is.
We have to, we have to, he would be the one to make the decisions anyway.
I mean, other communities, other cities and towns have done it, from private developers to all, and it works. I mean, it does work.
I'm not, we're not saying we wouldn't. We just, we just don't know the details that we want to make sure we do.
What the steps are.
Yeah, and I think the first step is to see what the highway survey, because if we're doing tree work on the side of the roads, he oversees that anyway, so he would be, he's our expert. So I would like to start with him and you. You're the other expert in terms of the, and you, of course, you're the money expert, but you're the grant writing expert. So maybe between the three, we can take a look at this. Is there a deadline on this?
March 3rd.
March 3rd?
Well, maybe advisable that you ask them to put together a draft application for you to review. There we know the exact parameters of what they're looking to submit.
From them?
Yeah, from you guys.
Okay. Are you able to do that? Okay. Well, you want to do that, and our next meeting is the, not, well, not next one.
7th, February 7th.
The 7th. You won't be here, so, all right?
I'll be here.
Go ahead, Bill.
Can we press on without you, sir?
Of course. For them, of course.
Could you get us the draft application before the 7th? And a few days before we invest so that everybody, Sandy, Cody, and Steve can all have a chance to take a look at it and give us whatever recommendations we need to follow.
I'll look at it also.
But I think, my sense is we're in agreement. I don't hear dissent, so we would like to see you get the trees taken care of.
And the other reason, we planned on doing it, like, over a series of years. It's what we're doing for oil tank replacements, for septic, for everything, is that the town out of nowhere told us we had to do Title V's on all 154 septic.
All 154.
And nobody saw that coming. That was, we did, we complied, but it was, that tree fund did it, so.
All right. So we'll put this on the agenda for the 7th. If you can get the draft report, or the grant, rather, into Cody, and he'll make sure that Sandy and Steve take a look at it and give us some sort of idea on the 7th what we can do about it.
So when should she have that to Cody? 5th?
Sometime...
As soon as you can get it into me.
Maybe next week sometime? Yeah. We want to, on the 7th, we want to be able to discuss it and maybe even vote on it. But we're not gonna do that until Steve, Cody, and Sandy all have a shot at it and tell us what, what needs, you know, whether it's something we can do or should do or whatever.
All right, great.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. 7:45, we're right on schedule. Amber Sadler, is she here?
She's joining us via Zoom.
Oh, Amber? Hello?
She might be iPhone. That's a giant phone picture. Just a massive phone.
Do you know what phone she's joining from, Pam? It just says iPhone.
You know, kids wanted to know what that is.
What about 6, Pam? Is it a 617 number?
It's true, Dave.
It's true.
435.
Let's see, we can ask iPhone?
Amber, one picture there, but I don't think that's Amber. No, that's not me either. Hello, Amber.
Amber?
Amber waves of grace.
A good night.
Do you have a, do you have a number, Pam? We can just give her a call? Is that okay?
I don't want to speak for the chair. Sorry to do that, to call.
So iPhone is Caesar, so I don't think she's on.
You have that big phone head, nothing. Pam's calling.
They've done this before, right?
Yes. This isn't ever you.
It's the same as the meeting ID.
It's the same as the meeting ID number.
So the 781.
No, it's okay. No, that's all right.
See, darling?
Sure.
People are gonna be running all this. I know, God.
Are you joining them?
Yeah, my car.
No, I just used it. It's 781. It's 781. 294. 1316.
Thanks, Amy.
No spaces.
No spaces.
Don't worry, spaces. Yeah? Okay, hold on.
Absolutely. No. I mean, I run. It's not a lot. If I'm running, you should be running. Something bad is happening.
You can drive the car.
Yeah. Jump it, you know what I mean? That or it's the ice cream truck.
I think my wife, she, when she used to work at the hospital, they used to put a team together. I don't think she ever did it because she's not like that.
Who is the longest one?
I got it.
Who gets the longest stretch?
We just took a...
Can we put her on this one? Pam's having a sidebar.
You know, if you want us to do a conference call, you want to call it? Do a conference call.
It's like talk radio? We got talk radio.
Put her on speaker.
Come on, call that. The first caller coming in.
Here, we'll put this.
Here we go.
Put this over.
She's on speaker. Eric?
No, that's okay. No, that's all right.
See you, darling.
Sure.
People are gonna be running all this. I know, God.
Are you joining them?
Yeah, my car.
I think we did a season, rolled down the road.
No, I just used it. It's.
781.
It's 781.
Yeah.
294.
294.
13.
Thank you.
16.
Thanks, Amy.
No spaces.
No spaces.
Don't worry, spaces. Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. No, I mean, I run. It's not a lot.
If I'm running, you should be running. Something bad is happening.
You can drive the car.
Yeah, jump it, you know what I mean?
Either it's the ice cream truck.
I think my wife, she, she used to work at the hospital. They used to put a team together. I don't think she ever did it, because she's not like that.
Who gets the longest run?
I got it.
Who gets the longest stretch?
They usually break it up.
Put her on.
Put her on this one? Can I have some on the sidewalk?
No, you want us to do a conference call? You want to call it?
It's like talk radio.
We got talk radio.
Come on, call.
First caller coming in.
Here, we'll put this.
She's on speaker.
We can hear you.
Perfect.
All right, Amber, are you there? Hello?
Can you hear us?
I, I can. I am. Just so you guys know, I am hard of hearing, so I might need you to speak up a little bit.
Put the phone in between, just drop, okay, right there in the.
Okay, so we're, we're a little technical issue here, but that's okay. Do you want to just give us a brief idea of what you want for us on the Ragnar relay?
Okay, so let me tell you really quick. Teams are, the, the race is May 19 and 20. They're expected to come through Halifax between about 1:00 AM and 8:30 AM, probably closer to 1:30 and 8:00, but we like a little bit of a buffer. They just kind of trickle through. We're expecting about, we're projecting 160 teams. Generally, 10 of those no-show, so you'll see about 150 individual runners over the course of that seven-ish hours. They will be stopping, and I, I put in an application at Halifax Elementary School. That's where they stop. They pick up an incoming runner, drop off an outgoing runner. We will have toilets dropped off. I am using a different toilet company this year because I know historically they've left them longer than they should be. And then, of course, we always get en reaster. If we're gonna leave the toilets longer, that's, that's gonna blow them over. So we've changed vendors that way to help take care of any issues. But teams, basically, the vehicles come in, they pick up their runner, they drop one off, and then they head on up to Kingston. So we're looking for just a pass-through, event permit, no road closures. And in the past, we haven't had any police detail. There's generally not much traffic out when it comes to 2:00, 3:00 AM. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
All right. Chief Chaves, are you still on the line over there?
Yeah, he is.
Yes, I am.
All right, great. Can you give us any input you might have for the Ragnar race? Do you know, do you need details, anything that you need to have us address?
No, we've had, we've had them come through, at least as far as I know, since I've been here the last three to four years. I know, obviously COVID put a damper on their relay race, one of the, I think, one of the years, or maybe even possibly two of the years. But we've never had a problem, like, like, she stated, they come in through the early morning hours. They are, for the most part, out on the sidewalk, very visible signage for the road. They have lights flashing, lights set there to direct the runners, so which way to go. I, I, what I do is I typically have one of the night guys spend some time around 36 and 1:06, when they cross to go up towards Albana, again, because they're, they're crossing the street. But no problems at all, no issues at all, from a, from a policy perspective.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Do we, so we, we don't have any sort of permit for this, I think. We're just gonna say it's okay, I suppose, right?
Yeah, I think I said, Amber, did I send a letter last year to recall?
Yeah, yeah, we like to keep something just in case we're stopped. And actually, I don't think you even sent, you may have sent a letter. I, I'm not gonna promise that my memory is correct. But I always save the, the email in lieu of a permit, so we can do that either way. I just like to have something on our records saying, yes, we're okay to be there.
So I will take a motion to approve the Ragnar event as described for May 19th and 20th, 2023.
Before I second that or move that, Amber, so, so May 19th is Friday.
Yes.
The 1:00 AM to 8:30 AM, is that Friday morning or into Saturday morning?
It's Saturday. You'll notice volunteers setting up at the school around 11:00 PM on the 19th.
Okay.
Other than that, you won't see them until Saturday morning.
I was, I was just, I was just concerned about school. If it was that Friday morning, obviously, we have a bunch of kids. I don't remember it conflicting with school, but I just wanted to make sure it was that Saturday and not the Friday.
Yep, you're right.
And my other question is, people, people do this on their own free will?
You know what? That actually is something that I asked all of the teams. Are you sure? Are you very sure about this? But so far, yep.
Just checking, just checking.
Jonathan wants to volunteer.
Yeah, my name is John.
You're volunteering to run, right? You're gonna run the race?
Yeah, this is Chairman Bruno, right here. And I have my partner Cody Hatad. We can't wait. We're gonna be in uniform, and it's gonna be great.
I'll be the wall boy.
Perfect.
So moved on Mr. Bruno's motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Congratulations and good luck on your run.
Thank you.
Good luck, Amber.
Thank you so much. We're excited to come back. You guys have a good night, okay?
Thanks, you too.
All right.
Okay, I think that clears all of our regular business. So the next thing that we have to do is a executive session on contract negotiations. Any, we'll be discussing strategy and any discussion in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. So I would move that we go into executive session for that purpose. Do we have a second?
A second.
And we have to roll call, Najah?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
John?
Do we have to say, John, that we're not coming back?
Yes.
Uh, yes, we won't be coming back into public session, and the meeting will be over.
Okay.
Okay, so we can clear the screen, clear the room, and we can do our business.